Good afternoon, everybody. It's Monday, August 2nd, 2021 at 3:30 PM. We're at the Police Station Community Room. I'll call to order the Free Town Board Selectmen meeting. We will be going to executive session and then returning back into open session. We will be going to executive session for the following two reasons. Master of Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation if open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of public body that shares so declares. Coparts of Connecticut versus Board of Selectmen for the town of Free Town. And then second, Master of Law, Section 30, Chapter 30, Section 21A 3, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, town accountant. Alright. So I will entertain a motion for us to go into executive session.
Motion made, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Hello?
Aye.
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 Okay, just one moment, please. Selectman Zager?
Yes.
Selectman Matthews?
Yes.
Selectman Grunewald?
Yes.
Alright, we are now back from executive session. And so first on the agenda here is discussion vote to authorize sub grant to the town of McLeitville for $83,000 and Lakeville to certify it. We use the funds in accordance with the terms of the original IT community compact agreement. So this is page 25, 45 in our packet.
Forty-five?
Yeah.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
So this seems relatively straightforward, right? So pretty much we get a grant, like a shared grant?
Correct.
And we're just gonna give our portion directly to Lakeville? And then we'll get just a statement or kind of reimbursement of where that money went because what it's being used for is, you know, gonna benefit both towns. Is that, am I missing anything there? I guess just the values. So the community compact grant is for a total of $166,000. This makes sense, just 630, so yeah, $83,000 go to Lakeville.
What was the grant for, actually?
Sure.
It's an IT community compact grant.
IT?
Yeah.
Okay.
So it's like for digitization of records and organization file storage, that's kinda stuff.
Yeah, and there's a, there's a big list of all the kind of things that, in the packet that it's gonna be used for.
With Lakeville or we just splitting the funds?
So I think it's, my understanding is that Lakeville's gonna be actually facilitating the implementation of it, right? But we're, I mean, it's gonna be digitizing both of our records, right? No? Or is it just for the Free Town, Lakeville, middle school type stuff?
So basically each town can take their monies that they have towards this grant. You apply for a community compact together as different communities to, if you wanted to get them. So Free Town has been, decided how they're gonna spend their money, Lakeville will decide how to spend their money. And this is just how Kim is suggesting that you would get Lakeville's money. So every time Lakeville wants to make a purchase, they don't have to contact Kim, they'll be able to just do it. But Free Town is the grant administrator, so she has to do the reporting. So she just needs to have proof of what things were spent on so that at the end of the grant, she can deliver all the necessary documents back to the state.
Alright, yeah, that makes sense. So it's just a, it's just a easier way to administer the whole process. Either, so we're gonna spend the money on our stuff, they're gonna spend their money on their stuff, but alright.
Need to vote on this?
So yes, I'll entertain a motion to vote on, to authorize a sub grant to the town of Lakeville for the $83,000 and Lakeville to certify it, but use those funds in accordance with the terms of the original IT community compact agreement.
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so now moving on to discussion vote on parade and fireworks committee, committee supplies and storage units at the highway department, moving to the storage retainer of the old police station.
I know that the town administrator from Lakeville was planning to come at four, just to throw that out there.
To discuss the
To discuss that, yeah. And I know the parade and fireworks people were also gonna come
Here he is.
At four. Okay, there you go. Okay, you look familiar. I thought, I was like, I think that's who that is. So you can do that one now.
What's your name, sir?
Yeah, Bob Gregory.
Bob Gregory.
I'm on the parade and fireworks committee.
Okay.
My wife would be here, but she has a migraine, so she cannot be here.
So I understand that one. I suffer from migraines myself, one of the worst. Yeah, so just, I mean, it seems pretty straightforward. The stuff's currently being held in a dilapidated
Oh, yes. The critters are getting in and chewing on things, so they ruined a number of flags last year. So when the police station was being built, we had approached Carlton about getting, they used one of those containers and kept that in the van until obviously things progressed, so the station is open now. And we talked to him last week and went over to the smaller of the two units and inspected that. There's still a few things in there that have to be removed by the police department. And so he's okay with it. We talked to Chuck. Obviously, he wants to destroy that old steward unit because it's just falling apart. It's not good for anything.
Yep.
And also talked to Jeff Chandler, building inspector, and he's okay with it too. And if we do get to use it and you approve it, then we'll make sure Jeff has a key and the police chief, whoever needs or wants a key, so they'll also have access to it. And it'll be a great, great help for us because we started off in the basement of the town hall, which you all know was
Oh, I know.
Difficult to try again. And then we thought we were in heaven when we moved over to the town, town line area. It was for a few moments until, you know, the elements took its toll and now they're up hold and it's past its use.
Yeah, now, well, you're making our lives real easy here because you already talked to all the people that I want to talk to. So that seems
Alright, great, definitely, great.
Makes things go quick.
We definitely need your blessing.
Yeah, no, so any questions from the board here?
Yeah, I was just reading those talks that the new container is, has a lot of mildew and it's only affect whatever you put in there.
There was a little bit of mildew, which like, for what we put in there, you know, I don't think it's going to be a problem. Not a problem. We'll get in there and air it out occasionally. The police, I believe, stored things in there and probably didn't go in there too often. And we can put the containers of that desiccant in there to help with moisture during the, you know, damp, humid weather.
You're aware of it?
Oh, yes, oh, yes, oh, yes. Compared to where we are now, keeping the moisture versus rats and mice and whatever else.
They don't eat much, do they?
No, I'm surprised what they eat. But sure, anyway.
Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the fire, parade and fireworks committee supplies and storage unit of the highway department to be moved to the storage container of the old police station effective 8/9/2021.
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
The parade and fireworks, thank you, and the whole town will thank you next fall.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to it. Can't wait.
Just get your shirt and wear your mask.
Exactly.
That's true, thanks.
I guess that's it?
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Enjoy this beautiful
Selectman Matthews, the number five, we're gonna skip.
Okay.
It's gonna come to a different meeting. Six, the fire chief was gonna come in case you had any questions.
Yep, is, uh, do you know where, should I wait for him?
I would probably just, you could do number seven now and then skip to nine.
Okay, so number seven is discussing vote on the phone system upgrades needed the council on aging. Aging, it looks like there's a nice little matrix put together here, kinda shows the different options.
Oh, um, Deb, I didn't, I think we voted to give some grant money for that last week?
We did.
I spoke to the COA, they would like to reverse that. Are you aware of this?
No, I did not hear anything yet.
I got an email back from Bruce here. I think there's some confusion because I think he thinks that we're spending their $3,000, which we are not. The Board of Selectmen has $3,000 and they have $3,000, so we're trying to give the $3,000 back to the COA to cover this.
But he doesn't want it to go to the phone system. Because he says he has funds for the phone system. And he would like this money to go to the COA for functions.
That's what they put in, for their $3,000 is what they wanted. I think he didn't realize there was six, because I just got an email from him that there's $6,000 and he wants me to call him. So we may wanna just push this off to the
Yeah, so, so if you look in the packet, so this grant, like what I'm saying here, so there's two distinct line items that, that have been left in this living trust or wherever for the town. They're, they're both 3% of the overall money being allocated out. There's two on, like, so one is for the COA to spend any way the COA wants to spend it, right? And then the other $3,000, we were gonna give to the COA or as a, for the town, but allocate that towards the phone system at the COA. But, but okay, so
He very, I spoke to him today.
Okay.
And he very specifically relayed to me that he does not want that money to go for the phone system because I think there's other funds available for that.
Yeah.
He would like that money to go towards services for the people.
Yeah, I mean, I, at the end of the day, we can skip this and come back, you know, once we get a little more information on it and, and make sure that we're all on the same page.
Okay.
That, that's totally works for me.
And you say, why don't we talk to him and if we need any clarification, try and get him to come into the next meeting and talk to us a little bit about it.
Yeah.
I just got an email back from him. He was unaware, so this will work out fine then. He was unaware that the COA was getting $3,000 and the Board of Selectmen was getting $3,000 to do it, so he said this will work out fine.
The way it is?
Yes. He thought there was only $3,000. And so we have one of your memos.
When did he send you that?
Like a second ago? We've been chatting.
Alright, okay.
Yeah, so he's, he didn't realize that there was $6,000. He thought there was just $3,000. And so they wanna do the $3,000 for
Hello.
In low, uh, where's the memo? From, they stated they would spend the grant monies for the benefit and welfare of our senior population such as events and our activities with their $3,000.
You can sit anywhere here.
For the Board of Selectmen also has $3,000 and he's okay with you doing
Yeah, we actually already discussed it, but I'd like to jump back to it.
He just didn't realize there was $6,000. He thought we were gonna spend the money that was
I know, that's my fault. We went through executive session on the pass and then we expected.
That's why we were chatting back and forth. I'm like, no, 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 there's $6,000, so, but he says it's fine.
She voted already? She voted already.
Oh, changes like lightning. So I think we can talk about the we can talk about the phone system and which ones you wanna go to on the matrix and then you'd be okay to do the trust as well.
Okay, yeah, so we'll come, we'll jump back to that. I just wanna go back to item three real quick, even though we already voted, right?
Oh, you must be Ari.
I am, sorry.
Nice to meet you.
I was, I was headed for four.
No, you, you're early. That was miscommunication, my fault. My bad. So I'm, I'm Charlie Matthews, by the way. Nice to meet you.
Hi, hi, through you too. I'm Ari Sky.
Hi, George Ronmull.
Hi, hello. I'm Ari Sky. I'm town administrator in Lakeville. You probably heard I started not too long ago, months ago now, being of all the things and getting this work to the top there. One of the very interesting is record retention and kind of managing that. I know that we have this community compact grant that we, to jointly with you all. We are in the process of working on our plan. We're probably, I think the previous plan was to go straight to digitization, but from my experience, I think realistically speaking, you gotta be organized before you indigitize. So that's where we're gonna focus on. I have King Systems coming in to take a look next week, I believe. And I've worked with them in my previous job in Bedford. I doubt the $83,000 will pay for the whole thing, but perhaps some, some other resources will be able to get there. So appreciate your indulgence and support on that.
Yeah, I mean, that makes a lot of sense. I think, you know, hopefully we'll go down a similar path with our portions of the fund, you know, and we'll have to figure that out. But yeah, I mean, they just come down. Sorry I drive all this way. I thought this might've been a little more complex when I first read through the, what was going on here.
Problem solved.
Yeah.
Indeed, yeah. And I'm always available. While I have, Luanne's got my contact information, but I'm unavailable for your questions. I would be happy to give you feedback as you go along, which is what our plan is and what it looks like.
Sounds great to me.
Yeah.
Alright, that was easy.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
You too. Have a good day.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so now back to
Everything was this easy.
What's that?
Everything was this easy.
I know. Alright, so Luanne, now we're gonna go back to a gen, gen item, so seven?
Seven, yeah.
Okay, so we're all on the same page now? Everyone's happy?
Yeah, so basically Lil had put together this great matrix here to show you four different companies that she researched. The one that says eight by eight in the right-hand column is the one that we're utilizing at town hall right now. And you can see, like, some of them need to have the CAT five lines installed in order to do it. Comcast seems to be the best value here. And that's what they're using for their internet over there now, I believe. And so I did talk to Barbara Place and Bruce Wilbur and they both seem to support the Comcast quote as well.
Okay.
And then I did let them know about their Rennie Chavina trust that you may vote today to utilize that, so that would pay for the installation, the equipment, and it's about 11 months' worth of the phone. So there won't be any budget impacts for the COA this year. They just have to budget accordingly for the following year.
Alright.
So if you have any questions.
No, I mean, I think the Comcast seems to make the most sense, right?
Absolutely. Beyond being the cheapest, it has the less, least amount of upfront costs.
Yeah.
We're with them already, so.
Yeah, it just seems like, you know.
Yeah.
It's really a no-brainer.
Alright, so I will entertain a motion to, to go with Comcast for the phone system upgrade needed at the council on aging.
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so now to, and that, by the way, just a note, like, having this little matrix here is awesome. So that, like, things of this nature.
Lil had put that together. She did a nice job.
It's so, it's just like, I like just, I think we move forward, that kinda stuff too, like, it's just, that just makes things a lot easier. Okay. So now to so this is the spending plan that we were previously discussing. So Renee Chavina has
It's Rennie?
Rennie.
Renee Chavina. Renee Chavina.
What is this? Is this what we're talking about?
Nope, sorry. Right now you're talking about this one.
So yeah, so this is
We're jumping around a little bit, so it gets a little confusing. Right here.
Okay, what about these then?
The fire chief is coming, so just put that aside. He'll be here later.
Okay, I just didn't know why we skipped over that.
No worries.
What, sorry, what did I skip over?
The fire chief.
The fire chief's coming, so
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah, just, we're gonna hold on.
And phone system, we're
We're done with the phone system.
Yeah, but now we're gonna talk about
Rennie Chavina.
Rennie Chavina, which is the, the $3,000 app was given to Selectmen. We're gonna allocate that money towards the phone system upgrade, alright? So I will entertain a motion to approve spending plan for the council on aging and the Board of Selectmen for the living trust of Renee Chavina to go towards the, yeah, the phone system.
Motion made.
I just wanna make sure that this is really what the COA wants.
Here's his email right here.
And George, if you, George, if you wanna talk to him and we can put this on the next agenda, I'm totally okay with that.
It's only because I talked to him about half an hour, hour ago. And he, he gave me the impression, and I think I had it right, that he didn't want this, he wanted this money to go to programs.
Yeah, because he thought he only had half the money.
Right, so if you look at, this is the one that the council on aging did and they wanted to go to programs and benefits. And then the next page would be the one that the Board of Selectmen also got $3,000. And so you guys would vote for it to go to the Comcast. And here's his email here that says he was unaware that it was $3,000 for both. This will work out fine then.
Okay.
Okay?
Alright.
Okay.
Alright, so a motion was made in
About five seconds.
Okay, alright, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so moving on to item nine, this is an air sensor grant program, which seems pretty interesting.
Did we vote for the eight, number eight too, the way the council on aging wanted to spend this?
Okay, I did not. Alright, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the spending plan from the council on aging, for the council on aging, for the living trust of Renee Chavina for the use of you know, what is it, activities?
Events.
And events?
Support of the elders.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on. Sorry about that one, Luanne could catch. So now this is the vote on applying for the air sensor grant program.
I'm sorry, what is it?
So pretty much there's a, we're gonna be able to get, at no cost to the town, these air sensors installed. I think we're applying for up to 10 of them where they will tell any kind of, you know, toxic fumes, particulates, anything stuff all over the, all over town wherever we wanna put them. And we'll have to check them in real time, like, through, like, oh, you know, this company's gonna manage it.
How many do we get?
I think we're applying for 10. So we can put them, you know, around the primary areas we have. I would also like to have one potentially down towards, like, you know, where Stop &amp; Shop and Coparts, that area. Right, because we have a lot of just industrial activity over there. So that's obviously wanna be Rich Hill, that's gonna be one of them. You know, and then we'll have to figure out exactly the other locations. But, you know, I think this is interesting, put some data where we've kind of had a lot of assumptions, right? You know, and then this kind of solves the other, like, just our general testing issues that we've had. And now, you know, I think it's a really interesting thing. So, and this was who brought this to us? Was it Representative Field? Yeah, so so I think that we should, you know, I can't see the downside of applying for this. One thing I wanted to ask you, Luanne, do you see, I still see the, so the first year, it's free, right? Or everything, like, how's this, how's it work money-wise?
I don't see any kind of costs in there, so I can go back and review it, but
First year is free. That's what I heard you say.
Yeah, I'm trying to find
Luanne's pointing out, I don't remember seeing any
I don't remember seeing any costs associated with it. It was a total grant for it. It's $200,000 in grants. I don't remember seeing anything that said we had to pay, so
Yeah, for some, I thought I saw something, but, I mean, either way.
Well, they're asking for, how many do we want?
Right.
Between five and 10.
I think we want 10.
I put 10, for the draft. I might as well. I did a draft that's in the packet there and you can amend it any way or start over, whatever you want to do.
Alright.
Need to vote on that?
Yeah, so I'll entertain a motion that we apply for the air sensor grant program as Luanne has filled it out in our packet.
For 10 units.
10 units.
Motion made.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Chief, do you mind, if you mind, just, we'll just take your, your line up quickly, but if you sit up here, the mics can pick you up better.
Sure.
How you doing today, sir?
I'm doing alright.
This is one of the, like, when I was looking at the packet today, you know, one of the cooler things I gotta vote on is your idea of the grant. So I'm very excited about it.
I get to tell my wife because it's her work. First of all, see?
Oh, real, oh, yeah, exactly. Yeah, so I guess Chief wanted to explain, you know, $25,000 grant or donation for the Bristol County Savings Bank.
Correct.
It has to be used for public safety. They want to use that for the fire station, or for the fire department?
Yeah.
And why don't you just talk about kind of, what do you think we should allocate this money?
Basically, we, well, not me, but the guys and gals decided they, they have the UTV vehicle for the fire department. They wanna set up as a, with an EMS litter on it, because a lot of times in the force, we have to hand carry a lot on a stope basket. So if you get this vehicle here, you put pressure on it, drag it out, it can be useful. All kinds of stuff. Haul hoses to the woods, haul the game of the woods, protect rescues. Storm-related emergencies. We think we'll get a lot of use out of it.
Yeah.
And that's basically
I don't like in those woods and I always think about sometimes, like, what happens?
Yeah.
If I get hurt out here, you know, some of these trails are tight, you know, it's gonna be tough to get something out there, so.
What is this, what is this, a device?
It's basically, it's the, it's a small all-train vehicle.
Open?
Uh, yeah, so it has a cab and put on, but it's open, so you can carry people and carry equipment, but
Yeah.
And 25K will take over there?
Yeah.
Anything extra left over?
I don't think so. It's gonna be tight with just 25, we got all stuff.
Yeah, they're not cheap, those things, but
No, they're not cheap at all. And big problem, I was getting them.
Yeah.
I can't get anything else. I can't get anything.
So didn't, is it similar to the one you're looking at, similar to the one that the police have?
Very similar, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, ours is gonna be set up more to carry people.
Yeah.
People.
Yeah. Alright, well with that, I'll entertain a vote to approve the to, sorry, to approve this chief's spending plan for the fire department for the $25,000 donation from the Bristol County Savings Bank for public safety.
Motion made.
Second.
Alright, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
That's it?
That's it, Chief.
I'm the staff.
Thank you, sir.
I haven't thanked you already.
Wow, you guys are amazing. Oh, we get that process, get that money back to the town. Thank you, have a good day.
You as well. Okay, so moving on now. I'm gonna be all messed up. Alright.
Number 10.
Yeah, discussion of vote on the language proposed in the Waste Zero contract. So this is a little bit of a tricky one. This is over the language of the force bejour. You know, language they have in their contract, pretty much like, they will not have to perform if one of these kind of acts of gods, God, or any kind of, like, I guess there's some language there that our attorneys didn't love. About, like, put protection on performance on their side.
This is for the actual performance of the bags?
It's like, it's for our contract with the trash bags themselves.
For the bags?
Yeah, so like, I think the concern is what, like, if the commodity prices that it takes to, to make the bags go too high or they can't afford to make them anymore, they pretty much don't have to perform on the contract, is what I understood. And I think that we kinda have, that's not good for the town, right? Now, I think the chances of that actually happening are relatively small and the, you know. So I guess my first question is, like, do we have a competitor that we could go to if, you know, if we're, don't feel comfortable enough with this language in the contract?
With the RFQ went out, it went out to three vendors. We got one quote from Waste Zero.
Yeah, so unfortunately, we're in a bit of a tough situation with that. And I know, like, I'm sure it's, this is just their lawyers putting this language to kind of cover them. You know, and, and our lawyers being, well, I don't agree with that language in there. So, and there was, there was nothing else related in the contract that we had issues with besides that, right?
We've worked all those other things out.
Yeah.
This is just the sticking point that we have to decide how you wanna go.
Well, to your point, we really don't have a choice, right? Because if we don't have anyone else, then
I mean, and
what do we do?
Yeah. I mean, I, I guess I'll entertain a vote that we go for with the, with the Waste Zero contract as it's stated, you know, as they sent to us, I guess, or the most recent version.
With this section?
Yes.
So we're accepting the change?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't know what else we can do there.
Yeah.
Yeah, that makes two or less.
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with that.
Motion made.
Second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Alright, now, number 11, is Chuck gonna join us for these or?
No, he said I could call him if you had any questions, but it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, so, yeah, so this is for milling, milling pave on Chase Road from the railroad to Gurney, to Gurney Road?[1686.64] And then also Millen pave from Memorial Drive between Bullock Road and Chase Rose, over here. Um, the, I'll get down to where this is, page seventy-six. No, page one eleven?
You know, um, I know we voted on this, I'm just looking at the Waste Zero.
Mm-hmm.
Our council had a number of changes we wanted to make.
We have, the Waste Zero and the town council have agreed on everything but that one last thing, the force bejure.
Okay.
Yeah, we got through that last.
Okay.
Alright, yeah, so, for the chapter ninety project request, so this is, yeah, just straightforward, the, um, estimated cost. For the Chase Road from the railroad to Gurney Road would be, was it a hundred and sixty thousand or something?
Most of that covered by Chuck, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it's, yeah.
They covered it all.
Hundred and thirty-seven thousand, they covered it all, and then, you know, sixty thousand, I think is the other one. So, with that, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to approve, um, the chapter nine project quest, as, as requested by, uh, highway surveyor Chuck McCumber, um, yeah?
Motion made.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so now this is interesting too, so this was from Mike, I think, Mike Keo. Um, whether we want to designate somebody to sign the future chapter ninety request. Like, and he kind of explains, it's kind of a weird situation, not weird, just. It doesn't need, it, it might speed up the process a little bit with this kind of, this sort of situation, so it doesn't have to wait to come to town meeting, someone can just sign it. Now.
The town engineer or Chuck?
So it would be, I mean, I don't think it could be Chuck.
No, because he already signs as the highway surveyor, um, I talked to Mike today, and he's, or yesterday, he'd said that, um, it could be like a town administrator, if we have one of those, or perhaps the board chair.
Yeah.
So we only need one signature, and it wouldn't have, you could vote so that it wouldn't have to come before the votes leftman. To, you know, wait for a meeting and all of that.
Alright, make a motion that the chair sign.
Alright.
Yeah, motion made.
Second.
Second.
Alright. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that was easy. Moving on, so this is discussion of vote, uh, on ever source notice filing public hearing procedural conference. Uh, and request for comments for deferral of major storm threshold accounts for twenty-twenty storms. It's a mouthful.
What does that mean?
So, pretty much, I, I, we got our council to try to explain that a little bit, right? And it's just like, they're not gonna fund, I mean, maybe you can do a better job articulating this, Luann, because I still, I don't really know exactly what it means. But pretty much we can go and, and, and comment on this decision they're making if we choose. I think it's just like an accounting thing. Like, whether they're, they're, it's kind of like that, from my understanding, they're gonna have like a, like a unfunded kind of liability. I mean, that's what I kind of took it as. To, just the deferral of storm cost to the storm fund.
Can we get clarification, we picked the board members.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
We did ask, we sent the letter that's in your packet to attorney Rich, and he said, the notice received by the town addresses the request from ever source energy to defer accounting for certain storm events. As part of the storm fund established by the Department of Public Utilities. If the town has any interest in providing comment on this deferral of storm costs to the storm fund, it may provide such comments in writing by August twelfth, twenty-twenty-one. The public hearing will be held on Zoom on August twelfth, twenty-twenty-one, ten AM. He said you didn't have to take any action, but that's basically what it meant.
Yeah, so only thing we'd have to actually vote on is whether we wanna make a comment or not. Which I don't have a comment.
Okay.
So I don't, do we have to really take any vote here? I mean, if you, if you wanna talk to attorney Rich, I totally understand, maybe he can articulate it better, um, but I just don't think there's really anything for us to do here.
They have a Zoom before our next meeting, so if we defer, then it won't do us any good anyways, because the Zoom webinar already happened.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, alright.
Our next meeting is until seventeen, so it'll be five days after.
Yeah, so I don't, yeah. So, I mean, Luann, you think I should make a motion that we're not going to comment on this?
I don't think it's necessary.
I don't think it's necessary either, I don't, I don't see where that's adding value. Alright. Moving on, alright, so this is, um, to just kind of, we talked about this in executive session previously, but this is the town administrator job posting. Uh, so, the way the discussion went last time is, you know, we're gonna post a job. Um, we have a, the actual job description inside the packet. And then, from there, moving forward, we'll, we'll interview the candidates in open session. If we, I, I think the way this should work is if, you know, say we get five or fewer candidates, we'll interview all of them in open session. If there is ten plus ca- you know, anything over five candidates, we might have to narrow that down. And we'll have to do that, I think, in executive session, and what I, understanding of the attorney's interpretation of this, that's how this would go. And then we'll just have, you know, blah 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 on, on whatever, what we think. So, with that being said, um, do you guys have a chance to review the job posting?
I did, yes.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to, um.
Talk to discuss the look.
Oh, yeah, no, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. At our last meeting, we discussed, uh, turning the search to an agency.
For the, that's for the town administrator, this is, we're talking here about the interim town administrator.
I know.
Yeah.
Uh, so what I'm wondering, I mean, things are going relatively well, I don't think we're having any major problems right now.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, maybe rather than go through an interim, let's just go and start a search and get a company to do the search for us. How would you feel about that?
I mean, I think that, I like, I see what you're saying here, and that, and that makes sense, right, like, it's not, right now, things are good. Like, better than I think we expected things to go without a town administrator, right? But I think that, like, big part of that, so Luann's been, you know, and Mo have been really stepped up to play and putting a lot out, a lot of hours. I think that be, having a, even if it's a short term, three to six month interim TA, that's, that's only working part-time. I think that might help, you know, kind of take the pressure off them, so, so we're not, I don't want anyone to get totally, you know, overworked and, and burnt out.
Yeah, are you getting overworked and burnt out?
Way to put me on the spot there, not at this time.
Okay, alright, so, alright, that's.
And, and, and it's like, right now, things are good, but I think that, like, once we start trying to get this big spending plan to do. Um, you know, town meeting, special town meeting coming up, like, those are kind of more.
Well, so to my second point, then.
Yeah.
Is. If we go out and, and do a search, so to speak, and we'll post it, we'll interview people and all that. Uh, I, I don't know where we'll, where we'll wind up with that. But we've discussed that we have two candidates that are willing to come in, as you know.
Yes.
And these are two gentlemen that are very familiar with the town. They know the ins and outs, they know the people, they'll hit the ground running. We bring somebody in that's new, it's gonna take them three months to get acclimated. And, you know, by then, we'll be almost through with the process of getting somebody. So, I think we're wasting a lot of time, wasting a lot of effort. Personally, I really would rather have somebody come in that knows the job, knows the people, knows all of.
I hear you, I, 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 I see what you're saying, I, I think that there's potentially other people out there that we haven't, we don't even know about, we haven't considered.
But we won't know, we, I, I, I know what you're saying.
Yeah.
But every time you hire somebody new, you're rolling the dice. Right, we went through a whole process.
Yeah.
We hired Peter, and he didn't work out.
Yeah, and I think that this person doesn't work, say whoever we hire.
But it, this is just a temporary position that we can do without. You know, I mean, or bring somebody in that we know, we can take a be a known entity.
Which is sometimes good and sometimes bad, and then, but to the other point of it is, is what if Trevor tries to apply for the job, obviously Trevor's not applying for the job, but, you know. And then we hire him in, and everyone loves him, and they're a, a great town administrator, well then, maybe they become the new town administrator, and I don't know if that's gonna happen, but I'm just saying that.
What you're saying is absolutely correct, but there's one word, and it's a big if.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I mean, how, how about this, George, like, we could, just because we're interviewing, right, say we post this, we interview, get some people's names, you know. If, if we're not allowed by anybody, and if you don't think we need to do it, we don't have to hire somebody.
Well, let me tell you, I've been in management now longer than you've been alive.
Yeah.
Okay, now, don't make fun of my age. And I can tell you, the most difficult thing that I've had to do over my whole career was hiring the right people.
Yeah, I hear you.
So, I just don't wanna waste a lot of time interviewing a bunch of people, and then bring somebody in that's gonna be a crapshoot. When we have two people out there that we know exactly what they're capable of.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, I think that, that the optics of it though, if we just, if, I'd rather have it be, we talk to these people in a public session, right? Where, where, where the different people and folks in town will have the ability to, 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 you know.
I, I don't think the optics are an issue, I really don't.
I do, I always do.
But if, if we were bringing somebody new in, I would agree with you. But where we're bringing somebody in that's already run the race here, uh, I.
But that might be, I mean, that's, could be one of our problems, though, right, you know?
How do you mean that?
If, uh, you know, just us going back, from optics, from our, the way I wanna manage this, right, situation, is us going back to what we've already had, you know?
Well, like, the two guys that we're talking about, talking about Jack and David. Uh, there were no issues with David, he did the job.
Yeah.
Jack did an exceptionally good job, I mean, there's always somebody who's gonna complain, but Jack knows his stuff, he's been doing this for years, and same with David.
Yeah.
Uh, and even if there are people that may not agree with that in town hall, it's only temporary.
No, I hear you, but I mean, and I think that we're, like, if they, if they apply for this position, and I, I know you're saying it's a, it's a waste of time. The way I see this going is, say we get, it's one, it's one extra meeting we'll have, right, where we just interview them, half an hour interviews, we'll make it as streamlined as possible. And then we can make a, you know, an informed decision, and then also, you know, that'll be a public thing that people can see. I think, you know, probably get to the same place anyways, and I understand, it's, it's just, I feel like, I, I wanna do this in a kind of a more open way.
Well, how about, how about we compromise? Let's bring in David and bring in Jack and interview them in public.
Yeah.
I know, I just really, really am against bringing in a new player for a few months. On, 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 on just the possibility that they may be a superstar, you know?
Yeah, but, I mean, but if it doesn't work out, right, we just, we, we won't, we, with the contract, we'd be written in a way that, that we have the ability to, to.
You see, you just said it, if it doesn't work out.
But what if it doesn't work out with one of those two? Just because we say we know they were a known entity, well, things change, people change, things happen. So I, I get it, there's more of a sure thing with those two guys, and I'm not even saying it won't be one of those two guys, but I'm saying you. There's very few things that you're a hundred percent positive that this is the way it's gonna be. You could hire one of those two gentlemen back, and it could be the greatest thing since sliced bread, or it could go really ugly really fast.
No, you know what you're getting, like, it's, it's, it's not gonna be.
You know what you had, you don't know what you're getting, you know what you had.
Do you really think that David in a few months has changed that much? Jack has been gone, oh, a couple of years, but.
Yeah.
You know, you're looking at thirty years' experience of guessing at the moment. Uh, Jack is Jack, David is David, you know exactly what you're getting.
Yeah.
You know, and like I said, and the other big thing is, they can hit the ground running.
Yeah, I mean, George, think we're gonna disagree on this one?
Yeah.
I mean, I, 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 I totally, I understand where you're coming from, um, I, you know, when I did my, the, I did the department head meeting, and I kind of got feedback from everyone, and what, how they wanna see this process going. And I specifically asked them, you know, because I, at the time, this is, I wasn't as informed on this kind of, on how these things go. And, and I got a lot of pushback.
On what?
On, on, on selecting somebody, because I just selecting a person, the board just selecting somebody without going through.
Did you get pushback on Jack or anything?
I, I, they, they, I think they knew who, who we were talking about. And I got, and, and then also individually, I have spoke to other people, you know, you know, everyone has different pains on, on different folks and different management styles. But, I just, I mean, I, I, I wanted to make it clear, like, I, I get, I think you have a lot of good points here, I totally agree where you're coming from, I just think that. From the conversations I've had with different folks in town, in, in trying to correct the morale issue we have, I think going through, uh, just, just. Opening, letting, you know, we might have the perfect person out there, and I understand it's a big night.
No, but let me just.
I still see the downside of it.
We have a morale problem, and it's pretty big.
Yeah.
And, uh, there's a lot of reasons for it, and I certainly don't want to go into that now. And I can tell you that the morale problem does not revolve around David, does not revolve around Jack.
I'm, and I'm, I'm not saying.
No, no, but, you know, to your point, I just wanna clarify.
Yeah, I would say where a morale problem does kind of exist though, is, is from the, in the past, maybe the board making unilateral decisions, kind of, and making, you know, in general. So that, that's, that's what I'm trying to say, the optics.
I, I really don't want to talk about why.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm trying to be very careful.
We don't have to.
Uh, but, again. Uh, I almost said Peter, David and Jack are no, were not the cause of any discontent in town hall, you know? Because you can't make everybody happy all the time, I mean, that's a given.
We know that, we know all about that very well, Peter.
And I, I really would like to get this done, so that we can start on the search for permanent persons.
Yeah.
And, you know, to keep delaying that, and, and we, we, we're just wasting time, money, and effort.
I hear you, George, I think this can be, like, it, there's a good chance that we only get two, two, three applicants, right, and we have one meeting, and, and we can make that decision. And then, you know, if, if we wanna screen out, you know, I mean, we're asking for people of at least five years of related municipal experience, you know, like, I think we're only gonna get a certain. Type of person anyways who's gonna apply for this, who are willing to take this interim job position with knowing, you know, that it's not a long, a full-time position, right? You expect to get someone with experience and.
For the sake of, uh, moving this along, I, I don't think there's a need to interview Jack or, or David.
I, I completely disagree, even though I, I understand what you're saying, because you're saying they're known entity, to, to back to Trevor's point, where if we just go in and say. Oh, we're gonna hire Jack, we're gonna hire David, then how does that, that perception that comes out to everyone, is it's like we did something behind the scenes, and even if that's completely legit? No, but I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah.
No, but it's, it would be, if, if we were opening up right now, and then we say, oh, we're gonna hire one or the other, it just doesn't look like everything's clear cut, and I really. Want to make sure that everyone, townspeople, all, all the employees down in town hall, all know that we're trying to be wide open about everything, and, you know.
Yeah, we're discussing it on camera.
Yeah.
And, uh, I, I, again, you know, it's just to get this done, and start, and. Instead of wasting, I don't know how many weeks we'll spend on an interim, I would rather get started on the permanent person, that.
Yeah, I just think that things are gonna go, unfortunately, what, my experience so far, and working this, things are gonna go a lot slower, I think that this interim could be an easy six to eight month process. I think even just, like, so, I, I, I see what you're saying, but, I mean, all that, I think we're disagreeing on this. I'm, I'm gonna entertain a motion that we approve the job posting as it, as it, um, exists, and then we'll interview the candidates that apply.
Motion made.
I'm not gonna, you're not gonna say, I'll second that, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Nay.
Nope, totally understand, that's.
Yeah, I, it's good that we disagree, I don't have no hard feelings there.
No, I, I get your points, I mean, George, I really do. Alright, moving on. So. This is vote on, um. The draft, the spec, the draft of special town meeting articles to be sent to the finance committee, do we all get a chance to peruse those?
It's a new one.
Oh, okay, new one.
At least we've got more. So this is up to date, and there's a couple of things in red there that I had questions about.
So this is, this one's even after the last one you sent this to me?
I believe so.
Alright.
So, last time we didn't read through these, um, I wouldn't mind if we at least acknowledge all of the articles and, but with their description, to make sure we're all on the same page.
Well, could we study these and discuss them at the next meeting?
Yeah, that's, once our deadline to, to get this posted, we still have some time, right, Luann?
Yeah, they close on the ninth, so there can be more submissions.
Ninth of what?
August.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
And our, and our meeting, next meeting is.
Seventeenth. And originally in the timeline, you had voted to, to, once we received a draft, we would send it to FinCom. So if you can do that.
Yeah.
On the seventeenth, we'll have all of them in, and then we could send them in draft form to FinCom and town council at that point, if you vote to do that on the seventeenth.
Yeah, which makes sense, I guess, right, because then it's everything finalized with our blessing to move forward. Like, I, I would think that that would make the most sense, and George's point, and then we can look at the stuff before.
Yeah. So I think that's somewhere I, I didn't pay enough attention to some of these kind of articles during the last town meeting. And, um, and, you know, that's just my bad, I, I, you know, that's something I wanna make sure we actually talk about them in open session, you know, this time going forward. But, so, so, and that note, so we're gonna wait until we have a chance to digest all this, and then post this on the next meeting, and this is our, that's our approval, just to send these to FinCom for.
In town council.
Yeah, now, in town council, I mean, do they have these, all these, yet at all?
They have nothing yet, because I had put some comments on there in red and didn't know if you wanted to consider those first before we pass them along. My, my thought was if we send them along to FinCom before they're ready, then it might just get really confusing for them to see, you know, what version, if, or if we pull things or whatever, you know. you know, what version, if, or if we pull things or whatever, you know, I didn't wanna muddy the waters.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and, but they still, they'll have enough time from the time that we do, if we do send them our final list, for them to, I mean, we have until October eighteen, okay. So I just, no action on this?
We have to post them final.
On, on August?
Legal October first.
October first, okay.
So we have, like, our timeline, I think you have a meeting on September seventh, that you're gonna have to final finalize them at that point.
Okay.
But, so between that, so on the seventeenth, if we have them ready, you, you reviewed them, they'll be in your packet.
Yep.
And the complete rendition, and you're prepared to discuss them on the seventeenth, then it will, you'll meet all the deadlines.
Okay, so we'll be, so, okay, alright, perfect, thank you, Lin.
So what is, where is the deadline?
The, well, uh, your meeting on eight seventeen?
Yeah.
Then you'll discuss, discuss all of them and finalize them, there's gonna be more, I just got one from Highway, so.
No, I just want the deadline, the.
When we have to post them is ten one.
Ten one.
So those are when they have to be legally posted out.
So we can, we could theoretically add articles until ten one.
You can add articles until right up to it, from what I understand.
All right, okay, so moving on. Uh, this is discussion of vote on the land in Lakeville Free, Lakeville Free Town is receiving a property tax bill on?
If we can hold that to the end, Mike McHugh was gonna come.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I tried.
For sixteen and seventeen.
Okay.
But he had another meeting first, so.
Alright, I was trying to, I read all through it, I was like, this is, this is, this one's tricky.
Yes.
I think Mike would do a good job of, uh, breaking it down.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I guess we'll move on to the Board of Health.
Alright, so Agenda number eighteen, discussion vote on activating the COVID contact traces to assist the public health nurse. Uh, with the rise in COVID cases, um, I spoke with Lori today, and, uh, you know, unfortunately, COVID cases have started to rise. So she is requesting that, um, you know, we start doing the contract, contact tracing as we were before. Um, she was on it, unfortunately able to make the meeting, so she did reach out to say, you know, that she would, be very grateful if we could do that, because obviously, there's only so many, this is, uh, pretty tech consuming.
Yeah, so do we have money, it looks like it's state funded for the community tracing collaborative?
It's been, yeah, under, they have CARES Act money.
Okay. Alright.
So, um, want me to make the motion?
I'm, I'm, yeah, so, I'll make the motion to, uh, act, to activate the COVID contact tracers to assist public health nurse.
Motion made.
Second.
So now you have to ask, all in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Right, and I think nineteen is actually.
It's, yeah.
George's, right, so personnel board starts on agenda item nineteen.
Okay, so, what are we doing with that? We just, we have an MOA that's been accepted?
In, in your packet, you have to accept it and vote to sign it, and then we'll get it countersign.
Do we have a chance to look at it?
Yes.
And, no?
Too much two, 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 pretty straightforward stuff.
Yeah. Uh, alright, so we like to take a motion to accept the, uh, MOA.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Done.
And then I'm gonna agenda item twenty, right, now, now, now's all the rest of your stuff, George.
Okay, alright, twenty, uh, to acknowledge the resignation of Joshua Simmons effective seven twenty, seven twenty one. Okay, uh, what was his job?
Dispatcher.
Oh, okay, okay. I'm gonna make a motion.
I don't think we need to vote on that, I think we just acknowledge it.
You don't think you just do that?
Oh, you don't vote, okay.
Yep.
Alright, uh, acknowledge that it was incorrectly noted that Thomas Ashley resigned six twenty one twenty one, at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, Mr. Ashley is being transferred to the transfer station effective seven one twenty one.
Yeah, so this is just, uh, and we haven't had a discussion on this, wh- whether, you know, if someone transfers from one department to another, are they actually, are they resigning one position, starting another, or is it, are they just transferring, right? I think that's, this is kind of just clarifying.
Cause they're still working for the site.
They're still waiting, exactly, there's one from, it's a department, departmental change.
Right.
He just wants to make sure that, like, his pension is intact and all that.
Yeah, so he wants that, I don't blame him, I, I, you don't wanna go to retire that.
No, he just needs to acknowledge it, so.
Okay, so we acknowledge that he is being transferred. Uh, next one is, uh, appoint Ronnie Frakes as a laborer, effective eight three twenty one through six thirty twenty two.
Alright, now, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, appoint Donald Souza Junior as laborer effective eight nine twenty one through six thirty twenty two.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Reappoint Sandra M. DeLillo, Board of Registrar, effective four one twenty one to three thirty one twenty four.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve the agreement between Town of Free Town and Kim Fails, Town Accountant, effective seven one twenty one through six thirty twenty four.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approve the agreement between Town of Free Town and Chief Calton Abbott, effective seven twenty one through six thirty twenty three.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Appoint Michael McDonald as patrolman, four two probationary, full-time, effective, eight two twenty one through six thirty twenty two.
Alright, I'll make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, need to discuss a strategy for Board of Selectmen to conduct the required reviews in the agreements, the Town Accountant, Treasurer, Tax Collector, Administrative Assistant, Executive Assistant, Chief of Police, and Town Administrator.
Yep, so this is something that we need to do.
Okay.
Yeah, each of these contracts states that the Board of Selectmen will review these employees annually.
And that review's supposed to happen in open session, right?
I'm not sure of that.
I don't know, it doesn't state that, but it just says that they need to be reviewed, and one, um, I think it's the treasurer states, it ties her review to her, um, increases. So, um, you just have to figure out what's the most effective strategy to be able to do that, and they'll probably all happen like in May.
Yeah. So like, I know, like, sometimes towns have a, you know, or not towns, but companies, I guess, will have some kind of scale, like a, you know, a one through five, on different aspects of a person's job, how they performed, I mean, I don't know how effective those are in real life, but, you know, at least it's, they're easy to administer.
Do we have, uh, forms for this?
There are forms for, uh, review process that, I haven't really looked too much at them, I can pull them out and look at them.
Yeah, can we, can we get them for our next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
So that we can see if that's something that's, uh, workable for us, or do we need to get new ones?
Yeah, and I guess it would be interesting to see how they are, because obviously, uh, Chief of Police versus Town Administrator, two completely different jobs, so, how you go about it in standardizing, hopefully this, the form is just that, that it's pretty simple and straightforward, and we can standardize it.
Right, could, could you get those, whatever you sign to us prior to the meeting, so we have time?
You know, my, so, just one quick thing on this, so, we're in a unique position, we're, we're the board, we're not involved in the day-to-day operations, right? So how am I going to effectively evaluate how somebody's doing that I'm not dealing with, you know, if I, if I don't hear anything, it's probably a good thing, right? Like.
Well, we've done that continuously, in, in, in some fashion or another.
Yeah. Yeah. And I think we should, so like, hear me on this one, like, I could, I mean, now this is tough, but like, just shoot from the hip here, if, if, if we did something like, you know, a self-review, that, so that the person themselves would have to kind of, you know, say how good they did, right, that, that's, that's one part of it, you know, also like, just like, kinda, I think that allows someone to really, kind of list their, their, their accomplishments, you know, and we, we, we talk about it, right, that's one thing, and also like peer review, so that, you know, different departments can, department heads or, you know, in this situation, it seems like it's mostly, you know, like, they would be reviewed by each other. You know, obviously that'd have to be, there's a lot of weird legal stuff to try to figure out about that, so.
Yeah, and the problem I have with that is a lot of personalities involved.
Yeah, uh.
That's the problem, but I think I'd like to see if we can find, if there's a library somewhere, uh, or other towns, some, some documenta, not documentation, but, uh, uh, forms that are already out there.
Yeah.
I can certainly get you those.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I, I agree with almost what you're saying, Trevor, my problem is, is that all it takes is one person to say one wrong thing, and then they're against, you know, then they're, they're, you could stop butting heads and, you know, so I don't know that.
Another key too is that we're very careful what we're measuring, it should be, and measuring is really the key word, it has to be something that's measurable.
Yeah.
And that, that can be difficult to find something, but, you know, I would say Town Accountant, I'm just making this up now, uh, but are you, are the reports that I do, on time?
Yeah.
Okay, something like that, it has to be measurable.
Yeah. Yep.
You know, do you do a good job, that's not measurable, not really.
Yeah, it's, which is tough, right?
Yeah.
Cause it's the, it's the unmeasurable things that are most worn, you know, like, in real life, you know?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Um, a couple of things, one would be, um, that perhaps where there's six employees, each of you would take two, and then throughout the year periodically meet with them, so that you could objectively know what's going on with them, and things like that. Or the board may want to delegate someone to review on their behalf, for example, like the administrative assistant. And when I work with them day-to-day, I could do some kind of an assessment on them and what my thoughts are, and then you could sign off on it. And then that might be a real effective review for that person. And we also may in future contracts want to set some attainable goals for them, 'cause that would give you something to.
Yeah.
You know, review them on.
Goals are actually very.
Yeah, 'cause there's no goals in my contract, you know what I mean, so it's, you know.
No, I know, it's, and.
It, it would be difficult, and you see me twice a month hypothetically, so that would be also difficult to, you know, objectively review.
Yeah.
So, very good points, but can we, let's start with whatever we can find.
Yep, totally agree, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, alright, uh.
I think you're done, George.
I'm done, yes.
Alright, cool, so, moving on, so this is Board of Park Commissioners. So this is a discussion vote on the addition of a fence at the town beach, so it looks like, we got three quotes, but was there some discussion that, whether we actually want to go forward with, with the fence, or what, what?
Right, and Selectmen Zico and I were at the open space meeting, you wanna speak to that, Jeremy?
Yeah, so they actually had a lot of pushback about it, because of distance from the water, and they, you know, one of the things, and they brought up a good point was, right now, the size of the parking lot compared to the size of the beach is kind of disproportionate, right? So they, they were saying we kind of envisioned moving the beach back a little bit, creating more space on the beach. So I would hate to see us spend, you know, thousands of dollars and put up a fence, and then find out that, you know, a year from now, we've decided we wanna push the beach back a hundred feet, and then.
Rip down the brand new fence.
Yeah, rip down the brand new fence, I have to pay someone to move it back. So, it would be my personal recommendation right now to not move forward with putting up any fence. And then it's also, you know, they brought up, uh, one of the gentleman on the board brought up some good points about the fencing and, styles of fencing and making sure you have the right stuff, because part of it's aesthetics.
Absolutely.
We don't want it to look like someone's going into a jailhouse.
Yeah. Electrified, electrified?
Yeah, electrified, yeah. So, uh, you know, I think, uh, it's something that I would like to work with them going forward, make sure that everyone's happy with where we're gonna put it, what type of fence we're gonna put up, and do it right the first time, so.
One question I would have, and I know basically why, but what is the major accomplishment of a fence? You know, what is the real reason?
Uh.
You know, what, it's probably more than one, and, and.
Yeah, so it's really to try and keep people out, obviously that don't belong at certain times, and then as well as, um, the jet skis and everything being pulled through, so that's, the major concern is right now, we've put up some cement barriers, and they're pulling up trailers and picking up the jet skis up over the barriers and carrying them down to the water to avoid the boat ramp. The problem being is with that, I mean, they can still get it over that, so if we put up a fence, then they go over that. But one of the other parts I actually forgot to mention, Lin, was, you know, we talked about putting the fence from kind of tree line to tree line, because it, but, they would be able to get around it, so how much it's gonna resolve, I don't know. So, um, there's definitely a lot more thought that needs to go into this before we just go and throw a bunch of money at putting up a fence that's not gonna serve its purpose.
I can, also, like, hopefully we can get some, you know, state or federal money at some point to kind of work and fix a lot of these public spaces. And that, you know, we might be able to get, you know, have a more elegant solution to kind of prevent all this with a, a bigger, you know, investment, you know, so maybe, getting this defense wouldn't really do too much good right now, you know? So I guess, so we don't have to vote on it, right? We, we don't have to pick a fence, if we don't, if we don't want a fence? I mean.
I always put it off.
Yeah. Alright, so the next, so the only thing we have left, oh, there's two, um, Mike McHugh.
Number seventeen I can help with, 'cause I have some more information.
Okay. Yeah, the, the wood?
Yeah, 'cause I was really interested, I went, what is this?
Measure of wooden bark, what a great title.
It was, so there's a gentleman, uh, his name I believe is Paul Darling, that has held this position since the seventies. And, um, his daughter called me, and they are from the Gurnee Saw Mill, and he would like to continue on in this position. So for the next agenda, I did put him on to appoint him to that position. What Mike McHugh said, it's always good for this particular position, although it's not necessarily called upon frequently, but you have to have someone to be able to measure, um, when necessary, so he said that, basically, what he would be asking the board to do today was to decide how many people we would want in this position. So if we wanted to say, for example, we wanted two people in this position, then we would do an article to state that, you know, that we would do two people in this position.
Did he have a recommendation?
He had, when we were talking, he said two could be fine, like, um, you know, there's different ones here, some places, you know, some towns a point five, you know? I don't know if we would get five, 'cause I think just the two, um, may be a difficult call.
Yeah.
So that's as much information as I have, other than what he's gotten.
So he's just wanting extra, just because he's worried about that if he can't get ahold of Mr. Darling, that he would be able to call on Lin to go and perform this.
Right. And he did also note that we had two sawmills in town, so it would be if the question is against the person who we are appointing, that he really can't weigh in on it, so you would need someone else to be able to, you know, impartially do that.
Oh, I got you.
Yep. So his note on the bottom, he said, the short answer to this, since we have two sawmills and several firewood dealers in town, the position shouldn't be eliminated. If the Selectmen want to continue appointing the position, we should put an article on the October meeting to set the number, so there's clear guidance going forward. If the Selectmen wanna leave it up to the voters, they should come up with a couple of names, and we can elect those people in October, and then again next June. After which it would only be at the annual meeting, so you can either appoint the one that's interested, or just set a number.
I mean.
Can we push this down until we can talk to Mike about this, head and country board?
Yeah, that's fine, I don't think this is a urgent matter, but it, it is very interesting.
I didn't even know it existed.
Yeah, no, there's so, so many of these type of appointed positions that, I just never, ever thought it would be a thing.
The moth, the moth one.
The moth one, that's a great one. Alright. And then the ta, um, you know, the tax bill, I mean, we can just also push this to next meeting, and then tell Mike, you know, uh, just work when Mike's schedule's open, I know, he wears a lot of hats, so I'm sure he's busy.
And he's at another meeting now.
Yeah, alright, so with that, so I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.